Session. We are out of executive session. And the executive session is over. We're back in regular meeting. So let's go ahead. There is no, uh, no action to be taken. But let's do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Oaken.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
All right. Uh, will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the official color for Kenmore.
Is that the next thing or was it?
No, I'm sorry. We got a presentation. You're absolutely.
I think you skipped agenda approval also.
And if there's no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Uh, then the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Housing Development Consortium of Seattle King County Municipal Champion Award to the city of Kenmore. Mallory Van Abma. Is she available?
Yep, she's a presenter now. She just has to unmute.
Right, there she is. Hi, Mallory.
Hello there. Good evening. All right. So good evening, Mayor Baker and Kenmore council members. I am Mallory Van Abma with the Housing Development Consortium. We are a nonprofit association with over 180 member organizations working within King County to meet the housing needs of all people, regardless of household income. And each year at our annual celebration, we recognize individuals and municipalities that have taken great strides towards creating a more livable, equitable and just society through leadership on affordable housing issues. While COVID-19 has dramatically reshaped all of our lives and our annual celebration plans, I'd also emphasize the importance of this work and on housing stability. And everyone deserves a home. And the city of Kenmore continues to rise and meet this challenge head on. So tonight, we recognize Kenmore's efforts to preserve naturally occurring affordable homes through rezoning of manufactured housing communities, to enact a multifamily tax exemption program, which will increase affordable options for Kenmore residents, and for Mayor Baker's service as co-chair of the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, which has provided really critical guidance for cities and towns across the Puget Sound region as they accommodate growth in a sustainable way. And I really can't forget the vital efforts of, of city staff who've helped make all of these actions possible. So I am honored to present the city of Kenmore HTC's 2019 Municipal Champion Award. I wish it could be in person, but I hope you've received it at City Hall. I know City Hall is closed, but I just want to applaud you all for all your hard work and thank you so much. And we really look forward to continuing to collaborate with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I know staff has worked very hard on this. Tila, I'm not, uh, Tila, who am I thinking of? Lori Anderson has worked really hard on this. She's a member of the task force that I left that is dealing with affordable housing in, in King County. Uh, she's been a tremendous asset to the city and to the committee. And a lot of the things couldn't have been accomplished without her. So, uh, really appreciate everything that she's done. And so thank you very much, Mallory. I really appreciate you. And I really appreciate HTC and what they do for the community and all the projects they're involved with. You guys are a tremendous asset to the region and we really appreciate having you all here.
Thank you so much, Mayor Baker. And I, I really appreciate the direct shout out to Lori. She is so responsive and so helpful. So she's been.
She really is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And whereas, uh, Kenmore was an established community for many years before its incorporation in 1998. And whereas the community is proud of its history and excited about its future. And whereas Kenmore businesses, community organizations and schools demonstrate excellence and are widely recognized, which reflects well on the city. And whereas the sentiment about Kenmore's presence and future is strong even in challenging times. And whereas Kenmore business owner Derek Wykoff brought forward an idea to establish an official city color, pointing out that a certain color is present in and emblematic of Kenmore in notable civic, business and educational settings. And whereas Kenmore city's flags, Gold Field and Golden Black of Inglemore High School Vikings and Kenmore Heirs Golden Black logo are seen around the region and convey pride and optimism. Now I therefore, David Baker, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city of Kenmore and the council, here I recognize gold as the official color of the city of Kenmore and invite the community members to consider it as a symbol of the city. And we actually have a Pantone number and everything. So gold is now our official color. All right, we have another proclamation. And this is a proclamation in honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution. Whereas we wish to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on August 18th, 1920 by the states and officially adopted on October 26th, 1920 by the US government. And whereas Washington was the 35th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on March 22nd, 1920. And whereas women's hard fought accomplishments have strengthened our economy, our communities and our families and have enriched the American spirit. And whereas women's resolve, innovation, leadership, passion and compassion have changed the world and continue to inspire future generations of women. And whereas the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution has played an important role in advancing the right of all women. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor, on behalf of the Kenmore City Council, recommend that residents and civic institutions celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's right to vote to the Constitution of the United States. Reaffirm our desire to continue to strengthen democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. So we'll take a second and let that sink in. All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views and issues that are important to you and to the community. And you can email the comments to Finance and Administration Director Brian Gregory at jgregory@kenmorewad.gov by 5:00 PM on Monday. Uh, and all comments received will be forwarded to the council for consideration. And before we start the citizen comments, I just want to take a moment here. Two meetings ago, at the end of citizen comments, I used a tone of voice that I should not have used. And I really apologize for using that tone of voice. And I beg your forgiveness. However, I did mean everything I said. I just should not have said it the way I did. Anyway, um, clerk, please call the first person.
Okay, it looks like Victoria Grayland. Your hand was raised. I'm going to promote you. So when you start, go ahead, Victoria. I'll start recording or timing when you start talking.
Thank you. I'm Vicki Grayland and I live in Kenmore. After the council's annual retreat this year, I was heartened by the city's new policy to always choose the least environmentally damaging option when doing a city project. My perception was that it would apply to both city contracts with vendors and city projects done by stamp. Last week, I talked about two projects that I had expressed concerns about last year. The asphalt sealant put on our streets and the paint striping. My concern was that these projects were not using materials that align with the new policy. After citizen comments, the mayor said, we're already doing that, except we're not. Please correct me if I'm wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, but the same, exact same material is being used for asphalt sealant as last year. And there are safer, less toxic materials available now. And Jennifer Gordon informed me that the county is using the exact same paint as they used last year, even though there are safer, less toxic paints available. And the county has a similar policy of using the least toxic alternative. So a policy is not a policy if it isn't implemented. Was the directive communicated to the entire staff? Is the policy part of the requests for proposals? Is the policy on our website? Is, uh, if it isn't, and we're actually using this policy to make decisions, then it isn't fair to vendors. And if we're not using a policy to make decisions, then it isn't fair to the environment or to those of us who had hopes for better environmental decisions. I would love to see this policy implemented in our city. It's a beautiful idea and it would be for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland.
Okay, so it looks like Todd Prince. I'm going to promote you. And whenever you're ready, you can unmute yourself and I'll start timing for three minutes.
Hello, Kenmore City Council members, and thank you for your time tonight. My name's Todd Prince. I've been a resident of Kenmore for over a decade now. And as a homeowner, I understand how difficult it is to own a home and what goes into what is for most of us the largest investment for our families. There's so much that goes into purchasing a home well beyond the price of the house. You look at the community and the character of the neighborhoods that you're moving into, as well as the safety, as this is where you plan to raise your family. Part of the character of the neighborhood is based on the zoning and types of properties that can be built within yours and the surrounding neighborhoods. With your proposal to allow more accessory dwelling units really seems to be a complete disregard to not only what goes into building the character of a good neighborhood, but will quickly destroy our neighborhoods as you have no way to manage the growth and impact to these neighborhoods. When we look at, to be clear on what these accessory dwelling units, this proposal does not do. It does not change anything for those who want to have an elderly family member or someone in need of care to come live with them. There are already options available for that situation. It doesn't support affordable housing. There's nothing in the requirement that an ADU needs to be affordable or even what that means. It does not support maintaining the character of our single family homes and neighborhoods as they will no longer be single family homes, but multifamily neighborhoods. When we look at what this proposal will do, it encourages high density housing in single family neighborhoods that were not designed or have the supporting infrastructure to support high density multifamily housing. It will make property in single family homes less affordable throughout Kenmore, negatively impacting affordable housing and those in need. No longer will single family homes be valued on their original intent, but based on the potential earnings by maximizing the addition of ADUs on the property. Young families who want to raise kids here will not be able to afford a home with a yard and impacting our schools and future quality of education. It's going to force people who otherwise wouldn't or aren't qualified to be property managed to do so in an effort to afford the increase in cost of homeownership. It creates loopholes for developers and will displace vulnerable residents throughout the neighborhood and increase property taxes. The fact that property does not need the owner occupied beyond six months is an invitation to developer abuse, tearing apart the fabric of our neighborhoods for pure greed without regard to long term impact to our neighborhoods. Once built, the ADUs become a permanent fixture and additional resident on the property, further increasing the cost of homeownership. It will create parking issues and extra burdens on our neighborhoods. We've already seen this impact with apartments and high density housing that are added and sufficient parking isn't required and it then bleeds into the surrounding neighborhoods. It'll increase traffic and wear tear in our roads. It will bring an extra noise and safety issues as you have no plan or support to manage the extra congestion and growth.
Thank you for your comments, Todd. You're at three minutes.
I'm asking you to say no to voting on this, if you could, please. Thank you. Sorry, I ran over.
That's okay. And I did want to mention.
I just, yeah, you go ahead.
This is the time for citizen comments. So if you have comments specific about the ADU item and the public hearing, that is later in the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. If you would like to, um, anybody who still has their hands up, I'm going to assume that you would like to talk about, um, just general citizen comments. So I'm going to promote Finley.
Point of order.
There is going to be, state your point.
People might need a little reminder to give their name and their city where they live.
Right.
Right, so Finley, if you could unmute, state your name and your address and then I will start the timer. Finley.
Okay, I'm unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. I have a question, a concern and a suggestion. My question, I'm still perseverating and perplexed about the city's proposed condemnation of the property at 7023 Northeast 175th for its use as a public works facility. Why is the city choosing to condemn 100% of a property owned by a small business when it could condemn only between 8 and 11% of an almost identical property owned by a large business right next door? For the small business owner, the condemnation seizure takeover is catastrophic. For the large business owner, it would be an inconvenience and an adjustment. My concern, I'm concerned about the dissemination of important city information and council activity. In the online city news, a statement was released on July 21st informing citizens of tonight's ADU public hearing and vote. That was only six days ago. A press release regarding the public hearing tonight was dated June 21st, but wasn't emailed until July 21st. That was only six days ago. The multi-page city newsletter is tooting its own horn, so to speak, but not providing citizens with the most important information that has the most impact to life in Kenmore. For example, in the Kenmore Newsletter Summer 2020, there is lots and lots of COVID information, updates about construction, an entire page devoted to love notes, advertising for summer events, but not one mention of the ADU ordinance change proposal and tonight's public hearing and vote. Let's have a balance in the news of horn tooting feel-good stories and current and upcoming council activity that is most inconsequential to Kenmore residents. And finally, a suggestion. As a way for citizens to have an on the record dialogue prior to issues meriting a public hearing, I'm requesting that you consider having a Zoom meeting, a question and answer session with the appropriate staff at least one week prior to the public hearing. As you know, citizens can observe planning, commission and council meetings. We can speak for three minutes, but there's no venue for a two-way conversation that's open to the public. I'm not referring to emails that need to be accessed through a public records request. I'm referring to a genuine dialogue that's on the record. As you know, copies of councils are not part of the record. Citizens could zoom in with a question and get an answer in real time or just zoom in and hear the conversation. Because this would be part of the public record. It could be accessed as a resource at any time prior to developing comments for public hearing. If I have a question prior to a public hearing, chances are others do too. This process would be more efficient for staff than answering the same question multiple times via email or phone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rowena Solomon, I'm going to promote you to panelist. Okay. Rowena Solomon, go ahead and state your name and address for the record after you unmute. Rowena Solomon. Rowena Sullivan. I'm going to have to move on to the next person. Okay, Rose. You are on.
Hi. Hi, my name is Rose Hendricks. I live in Kenmore and I'm here to reiterate my request to commit to reconsidering our contractual investment in the King County Sheriff's Office. Today, I'm going to see if this works. I want to try and play a short clip of current events accompanied by a verbal description for the record and for people without visual access. So this is a registered nurse attempting to pull someone to safety when the police pepper spray her directly in the face at close range with toxic chemicals. A registered clearly identifiable nurse attempting to pull someone to safety. I recognize that we as a contract city have very little direct power to affect change in the sheriff's office. We saw that last week with the response to the mutual aid letter question and I have seen no reason to believe there would be a different response to further requests. But we can say that we choose to no longer invest in a system that will casually brutalize medics and peaceful protesters. I didn't even go looking for this clip. It found me on my internet travels. This is being done in the open because these officers do not see any problem with this behavior and have no reason to fear repercussions because we have not imposed any. This is happening now. It is urgent and it is escalating. And mobilization like this is supported in part by Kenmore's public funds. I urge the council in the strongest possible terms to divest from this ongoing brutality. If you refuse, I would urge you to consider what the circumstances are that would sway you and await developments. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Nicole Dubois, I'm going to promote you. Nicole Dubois, go ahead and unmute. State your name and address and then go ahead. You're muted. Hold on. Can you unmute yourself? There you go. Okay.
Awesome. My name's Nicole Dubois. I live in Kenmore. I live Lakewood Villa, which is directly next to, uh, the, the spot being set up for ordinance 200509. And I like to say that I completely oppose it. Many of the people that live here are unable to pop in on the Zoom call. They're elderly, they're, you know, just real quiet folks. And after reading quite a bit about it, they would like to store chemicals and big rigs and what, you know, what, you know, most state maintenance facilities have. However, they're doing this on a wetland and they're doing this right on the Sammamish runoff. Living directly next to it, it may seem like a good idea, but I feel incredibly opposed to it as I know there have to be better places inland. There could be a massive impact on both the ecosystem here and the noise and the general traffic. So I just want to say I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anthony Tiberio, I'm going to promote you. Anthony.
Hi there. My name is Anthony Tiberio. I live in Sierra Francisco, California. I've known the Chippewa family all my life. I'm a senior data analyst with ViacomCBS and I'm here to talk about ordinance 20-0509. I think the points raised during the July 13th meeting were anything but disgusting. It takes a lot of courage and heroism to bring up potential racial animus. The Chippewa family did not bring race or ethnicity into this conversation and had no idea that a wider audience might make this observation. City Council Priority Number Seven clearly states, attract new businesses and support existing businesses. This ordinance is in clear opposition of that since there are seven small businesses and a nonprofit. The Chippewa family is a model example of what it means to foster and support small business. The comment from tenants of this building speaks to the content of the family's character. I tried to find anything I could today on small businesses and the impacts that they might have in regard to eminent domain. Unfortunately, I have nothing to produce to the council today. Eminent domain law is such a topic of debate that in 2007 Attorney General Rob McKenna created a task force to examine the critical issues surrounding the exercise of condemnation power. Here's a passage from that document. His articles and analysis show that connotations transfer property from the politically weak to the politically powerful. Professor Somnens testifies, testified that connotations for economic development destroy existing businesses, homes, churches and schools and inflict economic damage on communities which outweigh whatever benefits they create. There's no legal duty to actually produce promised economic benefits and therefore there is no, there is an incentive for excessive claims. End of passage. It seems many states in recent years have actually sought to reform eminent domain laws for the imbalance of power that exists within eminent domain law. I'm not qualified to accurately decipher the legal lines that you folks are operating within. But I, and I do realize that public works facility is not an economic development related condemnation. But I think it's safe to say that parallels potentially may exist. The point I mean to make is that the framework has been built in such a way so that you are the politically strong and these property owners and 40 small business employees are the politically weak. In a minute, if a municipality doesn't have to produce economic benefits in an economic development condemnation, I highly doubt you need to disclose an impact analysis to small businesses in this situation. At the end of the day, you will be displacing over 40 employees, period, small business employees. On another note, this family owns this building outright. How many of us can say we own a commercial building outright? The family would never brag about this. You can see the pride in their eyes when they look at the building. I can't help but wonder if it's part of the reason why you've chosen this property. Does not having to deal with a bank make the process of acquiring the property easier? This idea of politically weak versus politically strong comes back into my mind. Since you have the legal upper hand in this case, we're trusting that you make the ethically right decision. And in this case, restrain from using the unmatched power you've been given to condemn.
Okay, your time is up at three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Make the right decision. Thank you.
All right. Stacy, promoting you. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address and your comments.
Hi, I'm Stacy Valenzuela from Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park. And I did send in an email, but I guess since Kelly is not there, it's not being read at today's public meeting. So as a Kenmore resident at 7031 Northeast 175th Street, I am disappointed and concerned about the response to the citizen comment in the Zoom city meeting from July 13th. Several family members, friends and residents came forward to oppose the ordinance 200509, allowing the use of eminent domain to take possession of 7023 Northeast 175th Street in Kenmore, Washington. Not only did the family state several times how much they cherish their land, they did not want to sell. Were immigrants, did not understand this process. They also reminded everyone that they were longtime residents and you are in a pandemic. Therefore, with the city ignoring all this and moving forward with forcing them to give up their land, they felt they were being racially discriminated against. I am not in support of the city forcibly taking this land using eminent domain. This is not an emergency. Nor do I feel the wetlands and slow edge are a good match for public works. This land is used by the family for their business, cultural events, a nonprofit, and eight other small businesses. All of these uses, the city council states they support in our city. Public Works chemicals can harm the wetland, seep into the slow, and as well as cause health problems for residents as this property also borders the senior mobile home park. I urge you to vote no on ordinance number 200509 and ask Public Works to look for another location, possibly one already owned by the city. Release all the details fully of any future property for discussion and clearly and transparently post and deliver all public hearing notices. In regards to the second issue with the same city council member, I want to remind the council that for residents to finally come forward to speak in the public, then to be berated for your comments is so wrong and added another level of discrimination. I appreciate the mayor's apology. However, I think it needs to be a little bit more and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Looking at the list, Ray Hanashiro. All right, Ray, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and address and your comments.
Hey, my name is Ray Hanashiro. I live in Seattle. I am a special education teacher. I have been teaching for over 35 years. And I'm asking you to reconsider your thinking about using the Chippewa property for the use of public works facility. The family has provided a free space for tutors to work with students who are furthest from educational justice. And with the COVID-19 school closures, those students will become even further and further behind. We need to make, I think as a community and as a society, we need to make a commitment to supporting those students. So I strongly urge you to vote no on ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance 200509. And I also would like to make a point that I know that local government is so vital to the running of our society and having a well-run democracy. So thank you for your time and please think about the broader ramifications of your no vote on this ordinance. It will only benefit students who need the support. Thank you.
All right, Christine Sisma, I'm going to promote you. Thank you for your comments, Ray.
Hi, can you hear me? Great. Hello, my name is Christine Sisma from Lillaw, Washington, and I'm here to speak in opposition of ordinance number 200509. I am an Asian American Pacific Islander. I am a Washington native born and raised in the greater Seattle area. I graduated from the University of Washington where I'm proud to work and represent for over 10 years. I also represent the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee of UW. We developed a statement that I will now read to you. We will prioritize inclusive communities centering on belonging and opportunity for all. We must accept responsibility to identify and interrupt biases, privilege, barriers, and power dynamics. We challenge ourselves to engage in open dialogue, active listening, and empathetic learning. I implore you to be aware of privilege when it comes to ableism and technology. There are folks impacted by this pending ordinance who are not able to participate because they lack the technology, opportunity, and ability to attend this virtual meeting via Zoom during the pandemic. I made a pledge to use my voice and my able privilege to speak up for those left out due to those barriers, so I use that voice now. I respectfully request that you vote no to this ordinance. For decades, this space continues to be a place of cultural gathering and a safe, costly space for nonprofit organizations, community, and cultural functions for people of color and their allies. This is not just about property, but a land, a home, a purpose, and identity that you hold the responsibility of choosing to impact. Now I ask of you, dear mayor and council, please consider how you can use your privilege. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. John Hendrickson. There he is.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Where's my video?
I'm not sure.
Turned on.
I can ask you to start it.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, I'd like to talk to the council tonight about ethics and organizational clarity in public process and procedures. Before I do though, I want to mention that I sent Joe Marshall an email this afternoon with the minutes of the meeting from February 24th where he voted in support of eliminating the parking requirements for the ADU amendments. And you were the fourth to vote and I don't think you wanted to vote for that because you were against all this stuff. And I thought you made a mistake and I'm hoping you have the opportunity tonight to bring that back to the floor and revoting and put back in the parking requirements for any ADU expansion. Now, as far as our organizational clarity, it's collaborative, proactive, courteous, integrity. That's what your stated values are, collaborative, proactive, courteous, integrity. I couldn't even get a fact sheet on this ADU build out this week. City manager went into hiding. All executive management team refused to respond to my multiple emails on which you were all copied. The public is even more confused than the council, but look how the council is. Councilmember Fields told me this afternoon that this ADU build out would only match up with 105 lots. Yet on July 15th, Lori Anderson told me we have 6,641 lots in the R1 through R6 zones. I think that this is going to affect 6,641 lots, not 105. Your actions demonstrate no credibility in a persistent corporate cultural failure where you routinely provide false information or withhold truthful information from the public. You've thrown out the planning commission's recommendations. I can tell you, I went to a planning commission meeting, four of us spoke about the two ADUs. And after we spoke 12 minutes, Debbie Bent rebutted us. She has more power and privilege than us and she rebutted us after our citizen comments in support of two ADUs. You have a long history of unethical conduct. Look at the 2008 permit for St. Ed's that Debbie Bent managed and was using illegally. The permit for St. Ed's in 2016, which Debbie Bent managed, and look at that first meeting in January about what her proposals were in 2016. The parks manager had, in 2008, withheld information from the city council about North Shore School District wanted to go in on a ball field at Kenmore Elementary. Debbie Bent says nothing when the council dismisses the importance of the owner occupancy requirement. When she knows that developers get around these six month things all the time, it's just, it happens constantly. Developers come in, look at Lake Forest Park Platte, look at Jim Crone, they drain the land before.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hendrickson. That's your three minutes. We have Rowena Solomon. I'm going to try to promote you again. Okay, Rowena, unmute. Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, thank you. I'm not sure I know how to do the audio, but I will read my input for this. My name is Rowena Solomon. I am from Macaltea, Washington. I am a neighbor of the Choys for 30 years and a friend of Samchai and the like Chippewa. I'm here to bring to bear Kenan Williams's writings and the July 13th city council meeting comments. In an article entitled, "Washington Eminent Domain Law in a Rapidly Changing Region", appearing in the May 2019 King County Bar Association Bar Bulletin, Attorney Williams argues eminent domain practitioners can no longer rely on a practice-as-usual approach in the face of momentous cultural and economic diversification. Writing that planners often see gentrification as a public benefit, frequently displacing lower income and foreign-born populations, Attorney Williams asserts racial and social equity considerations must be a part of the eminent domain process. He asserted that cultural literacy is key in any contemporary eminent domain practice. As public servants, the burden of cultural literacy falls squarely on your shoulders. Williams's July 13 council meeting statement that race should not be considered in site selection is indeed correct. However, evaluation rubrics should actively embody Kenmore's stated values of equity and community. If eminent domain is indeed the only option, then asserting that someone will always be unhappy was insufficient and dismissive. The magnitude of the impact that any someone has on the community matters. Scoring must take the city's stated values in account when making the difficult choice to displace its own residents. Kenan Williams also said on July 13 about the legality of the process. He states, "That's why you have to pay just compensation. That's why you have to pay relocation to all those tenants. That is what happens." The mechanics of legality will never prove justification for the nuanced issues of community and morality which you, the elected city leaders, must protect and defend. The above excerpt from Williams, his own writings expresses this succinctly. We acknowledge the hard work and effort that the city has put into this process so far. You are gatekeepers.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Solomon. You're at your time. Irene B. Irene, go ahead and state your name, address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Irene Boone, former resident of Kenmore, and I'm a family member of the Chippewa family. I would like to talk about the ordinance 20-0509. And I would like to urge the council members to please vote no. You may not know, it is not our family nature to speak publicly. And in this case of condemnation, we feel like we must speak up. So thank you for listening. You are aware how important the property meant to our family, but today I would like to specifically talk about the selection process. Based on an assessment of a professional environmental consultant with over 30 years of experience, it is illogical and unfair, which we hope you will take note. With the site criteria, with the requirement of existing building of at least 13,700 square feet and a score range of one to six points, highest being the most suitable, a property with a building of 20,000 square feet was given the highest score of six, whereas the compared property that has a building of 15,300 square feet was given the lowest score of one, the same score given to another property with no existing building. How is that makes sense? On the ownership, a score range of one to four points, where a property with ownerships and business on the property will be scored lower. All of the other compared properties are owned by a single owner operating one single business, score of four. And our property with seven small businesses receive only two. Why is the impact to these seven businesses not important? On the timeframe, score range of one to four points, where we understand of the properties are unwilling sellers, which means if scored fairly, all should have received the same score. However, all of the other properties were given a score of zero, but our property received a score of two. When zero is not even an option in the score range of one to four, how is that logical? On neighbor properties, score range of one to four points, we understand higher score is given to property which has the lowest impact in the neighboring properties and the environment. The other properties which located side by side and surrounded by commercial properties receive lower score than our three points. But our property is located immediately next to 20-plus family homes and a large piece of wetland with an inlet covering a third of our property. Somehow the impact this residential community and wetland is not important and why not? Having a property works for.
Thank you for your comments, Irene. Your time is up.
Thank you very much. Thank you for listening from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, Leanne Van Alstine.
Can you hear me?
Can you see me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay. My name's Leanne Van Alstine. I live here in Kenmore and I've heard so much about the condemnation order for that family-owned business that's community-owned and I don't understand why you would do that when you should take a very small percentage of a neighboring business. And that neighboring business doesn't even sell retail because I tried to buy plywood from them and they only sell directly to contractors who have a contractor ID. It seems like to me the impact to business would be far greater if we don't allow, if you condemn that, the family-owned business. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to promote Sandora T. Sandora, I think is what it is. Go ahead.
Hi, there's just a little bit of a delay with the internet. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hi, City Council and Mayor Baker. I'm here again to talk about the condemnation order against the Chippewa family. I spoke last week and I apologize if some of my comments were somehow taken as racial bias. I want to confirm that the family did not intend for that to happen, nor did I on their behalf. They're very humble people and they've worked really hard to earn what they have. And so for the public's interest, I want to go through the timeline of how this happened because just as John Hendrickson said, there isn't a place for the public and the citizens to go and see the timeline. And I think the timeline is very helpful. So on 2/7, the city notified the family, actually the parents who were out of country, you now know that, probably didn't know at the time, that they were wanting to condemn the property. On 3/23, the city rep sent a second letter. On April 17th, they sent another letter. As you know, the family didn't know the process of how to handle this. Also, let me remind you that by that time, April 17th, the main focus was on COVID-19. It was all over the news. We were hearing about families in our area that were infected. On April 21st, the governor enacted a stay-at-home order. That meant that all businesses were closed. People were to stay in their homes. And during that time, the stay-at-home order was extended into May. On 6/8, one of the city representatives went on to this property and told the current tenants of this landowner that the city was purchasing the building and that it was a done deal, I quote. On 6/15, the letter of condemnation was sent. It was dated 6/11, directly during COVID-19. This is my main point. I think that it is wrong about how the city has gone about this process. The rubrics does not align. There's lots of errors. I ask all of you to go back and take a thoughtful look at what part you played in this decision against the family and the timeline in which it happened. And I ask for all of you to vote no on this ordinance. On 7/13.
Okay, thank you for your comments. It's your time.
I just want to say one more thing.
Sorry, we got to keep moving. Elizabeth. Go ahead and state your name, address, and your comments, Elizabeth.
Hi, can you hear me?
That was really scratchy. Try again. Say something else.
Can you see me?
Oh, no.
Is that better?
The sound got better.
Can can you, I turned on my video. Does that work or no?
No, I think maybe.
I'll go, I'll try to go to my desktop and if I can maybe speak later in the meeting, I'll raise my hand during the hearing, if that's okay.
Yeah, if it's about the hearing, okay, I'll change your role.
I. I-
Okay. Looks like Felix Choi. I think that's how you say that. Felix?
Hi, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, nice to meet you guys. I am the grandson of Sam Chai Chai Patanapong and Vilai Chai Patanapong. I firstly want to thank every single person that has shown up and continues to show up for my family and for the residents of this community here today. Not only is my family blessed to have you in our lives, but I think that each of our respective cities, including Kenmore, are incredibly lucky to have people who care about what they think is ethical and what they think is right. Secondly, I want to thank the council for being here. While it is our right to speak, I truly appreciate that you guys have chosen to listen. You have communicated your position, which I understand, but I do not believe in your proposed solution. What's difficult for me is that I only have three minutes to defend and try to somehow change a claim that I truly don't believe should have ever been put on the table. You have heard countless credible facts tonight and previously, which would take me too long to summarize and reiterate. For me, what is just as interesting and worth talking about with the remainder of my time is the age-old question of the ethics of condemnation and eminent domain. Is this practice not just archaic? The financial compensation doesn't even begin to effectively mask the violation that these businesses and families feel. Whether you want to acknowledge it or not, eminent domain as a practice has broken up countless communities in the past. In many cases, the original people and businesses weren't able to successfully return to those cities. Not to mention originally condemnation was used only on blighted buildings and properties, ignored structures and compromised buildings. What I see here are thriving businesses in a caring community, a place I grew up balm dancing in, a place that hosts holiday gatherings that many of this community have attended, and you should attend in the future. It is not, it is only court decisions throughout our history as a nation that these practices became more extreme and left residents with fewer powers in these matters. While I do not think that your council has or would ever base your decisions on race, it is completely accurate to include race and wealth as major factors for how this practice became normalized in the first place. For example, governments would use the same practice to forcibly buy land from minority communities, can sell that land to private rail companies, and more recent history, developers and real estate companies. My argument is that this practice in general, along with many others that have been established throughout our history, has no place in modern and future law. Just because a practice has been normalized doesn't mean that it's right. We have a lot to be proud of as a nation, but a lot to work on as well. I understand that the city of Kenmore has needs. Please know that the communities in Kenmore recognize that the city has needs. But it is these communities that are fighting for this particular cause. And I truly believe if the city might let these communities be collaborators rather than opposers, then a solution, if not multiple, could be found. For what it's worth, I want to ask just two questions. Can the city compromise by selecting a different location that might be a little less ideal, but a lot less disruptive? If so, how can we help? How can we provide assistance? We do appreciate our city government. We look to you to stand up for us. And if you're able to, then we look to you for direction on how to contribute to the solutions. How can we continue to build the city together economically, socially, and culturally? The fact is-
Thank you for your comments, Felix. I'm really sorry, guys. It's not personal. We gotta just keep moving. Okay, Nora Storowski. Can you state your name and address? Unmute? Nora?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nora Storowski. I'm a resident in Kenmore. I've been a teacher for 30 years, and today I'm asking you, the city council, to vote no on ordinance 20-0509. I feel this ordinance is in direct conflict with the city's priority number seven of supporting existing businesses. But I feel it goes beyond that. As a city, we should embrace, we should support, and we should empower businesses, specifically businesses of people of color. I'm compelled to speak up using my white privilege to support these families and to advocate for them. Please, please consider voting no so that there is an equitable decision regarding small businesses in our wonderful city. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Joan Marie Hughes. Joan Marie Hughes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, maybe speak a little bit louder.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council members of Kenmore. My name is Joan Marie Hughes. I live in Mukhalteo. I'm next-door neighbors with the Choi family. And I too am not accustomed to speaking in this manner. However, because of this gravity of the situation and what is at stake for this beloved family, I have agreed to do whatever I can to support them and come forward and speak on their behalf. I would really urge you all to get to know this amazing family. Because if you did, you would recognize the wonderful contributions they make to your community. They're not the type to brag about themselves or to toot their own horn. So you won't be probably aware until now of all of the wonderful things they do. They, their nature, and this all starts from the top with Sam Chai and Vilai Chai Patanapong. They welcome people with open arms regardless of your background, your ethnicity. They're just wonderful, and they will welcome you to their food, which is amazing, international cuisine, ballroom dancing, karaoke, singing, dancing, what have you. The cultural enrichment that they provide in whatever community they are living in or a part of is extraordinary. They truly are a treasure wherever they are. And so I am here to, I'd like to underscore the reasons why I strongly object to ordinance number 20-0509, many of which have already been mentioned. First of all, the site selection worksheet scores appear to be very problematic. I won't go into it in detail. I know you're aware. This should not be happening during the pandemic. The owners are out of country. They're elderly, unable to even come and assist and work with their children and grandchildren. And it's very, very stressful for everyone involved. I'm a little emotional, I'm sorry, but it's because of how, we love them and we know how difficult this has been for them. This extraordinary family is very selfless, and these gatherings are just full of laughter, dancing music, and that's just the benchmark of their legacy, in addition to all of the things they do for businesses and nonprofits, what have you. They are exceptional, and I really urge you to vote no on behalf of this family who has so much to offer.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, so looks like that's it for hand raises. Unfortunately, you're only allowed, oh, we had one more. Eileen McIntosh. Or Eileen, sorry. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Eileen McIntosh. I'm sorry about that. I live in Linwood. So what I just want to say is very short. I am a friend of the Choi family. And what I want you guys to just know is that when their families came over to the United States, they did not become a burden to society. I know with whatever is going on right now, everybody's afraid for immigrants because they are being burdens to the society. Some of them don't have jobs, but you see this family, they carried their weight. They earned their money and made their business. And aside from that, they were able to help other people. So that's all I'm saying. If you could please reconsider your decision and vote no to ordinance 20-0509. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Rebecca Chen.
Let me unmute and have you guys see me. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I haven't prepared a speech, so I apologize for the unpolished nature. This is my first time joining in as part of Kenmore. I'm a brand-new resident here, and I'm so happy to be part of this community. My favorite thing about it is how welcoming everyone has been and how engaging these meetings really are. So thank you. As I'm listening in and hearing all these diverging voices coming together in the single point about this particular land and the use of eminent domain, I want you to think about the optics and how the community is seeing this. As a new member, as I said, of this wonderful city, and also as a minority, think about who else will be coming in here and what sort of public record will be left and how you will be voting and what that's really reflecting on the city. Do you want this city to be a place that's welcoming minorities and the businesses that it holds? Or do you want to be one where the track record is a little iffy? And the way that this came about is a little questionable, especially during this pandemic. I think that this really is a great opportunity at this point in time in history to make a stand. And this might be a small blip in the radar of history where things will go way beyond, especially with the pandemic and everything that's happening. But you can vote on this and have this be a sense of pride saying, yes, you really are a welcoming city. Yes, we are going to embrace minority businesses and not just say it, but have your vote reflected. So thank you for listening, and I really do hope that when history looks back and when people look for a public records request, and when new people come into the city, that this can stand out. That when you run for reelection, you can say, yes, I stood for small businesses. I stood for a welcoming community because that's what drove us to the city. And I hope that it's something and it's a message that will continue on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. RJ Solomon. RJ Solomon.
Hi, could you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I am RJ Solomon. I live in Seattle. The Chai Patanapong family are my close family friends. And I want to finish the letter that my godbrother Felix Choi wrote. He wanted to say that the fact is, is that this is not your only option. So I am asking you, please don't force it to be the only option. But most of all, I really want to express my sincere gratitude for your open ears. We are your residents and communities, and you are our leaders. Please vote no. I also want to thank council members Revnik, Okane, and File for speaking out during the 7/13 meeting. And I can't see the mayor, but I hope that he is listening and watching, because we're all listening and watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, so is a council member File, are you calling in on your, that same phone number that you had too? Okay, so it looks like that is it for citizen comments.
All right. Thank you all for your comments tonight. We are not voting on anything. And we do appreciate you partaking in the public process. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded.
Who is the move?
You can guess. I mean, there's two of them that just neck and neck tie. And council member Okane and a clear second from council member Herbig.
Okay. Are we ready for a roll call?
Roll call on, oh, no, we'll just do this by affirmation.
Okay.
If there are no comments, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? No opposition, the consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Kenmore Municipal Code Amendments Related to Accessory Dwelling Units, ordinance number 20-0510. Miss Mint, Community Development Director and Ms. Anderson, Principal Planner.
All right, currently promoting them.
I just want to thank Ms. Anderson with that HTC award for all of her help that she's done with affordable housing in the region. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. We really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. As the mayor noted, council will be holding a public hearing this evening on proposed amendments to accessory dwelling unit regulations. Prior to opening, the public hearing staff would like to give a PowerPoint presentation to present background and also the council recommendations that are for the hearing this evening. The city has had accessory dwelling unit regulations for many years. And the reason that council is taking a look at amending the regulations is because in 2016, council adopted an affordable housing strategy. And one of the recommendations in that strategy was to take a look at accessory dwelling unit regulations as one approach to, for affordable housing. And that work program item was assigned to the Planning Commission in 2019. And the Planning Commission discussed proposed amendments. They did a lot of background research on accessory dwelling units, on different policies from other jurisdictions. They had meetings between August and November of 2019, and they held a public hearing in November. The Planning Commission presented recommendations to council in January of this year. Council discussed and gave direction in February. And then further discussion was postponed due to COVID-19 restrictions on meeting topics. And then on July 13, council finalized the recommendations. And we were now here tonight for the public hearing. Following the July 13 meeting, a public hearing notice was issued on July 16. A press release was issued on 7/21. The date did say 6/21. That was an honest mistake. It was 7/21. The city's website page was updated. There were social media posts, and a postcard was mailed to residents, which landed in mailboxes last Wednesday, July 23. All written comments for the public hearing have been forwarded to council, and commentators received an email noting that comments were forwarded to council for the hearing record. Written comments received during the public comment period between July 16 and 5:00 PM July 27 are considered part of the public hearing record. It's not a procedural requirement to provide a response, but staff has prepared a ma-